It is four o'clock. We will call the special city council meeting to work at the City of Laverne. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the Texas pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Texas flag. Texas flag. One. One.
Honor the Texas flag.
Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Oh, well, you know, we do that. But if they do, we're looking at the flag and they have a screen projection right there. So you've got thirty-two people looking right at it. I am third in the way in discussion to discuss the possible action of future water projects in the City of Laverne. Just a little backdrop to this. We met, just when I met with Humberto, David, and Wood. We actually had a previous meeting back in December along these lines as Canyon, we knew changes were going to be coming into the Canyon Regional situation. That would affect us. That will take place in December of two thousand and fifteen. We're still on track with that eventually happening, but there's some other things. And the one thing I didn't want to get things lost in translation was dialogue really between Canyon Regional and us. I wanted you really to hear it directly from Canyon Regional so that everybody understood what the position was going to be. So it will help us force our hand or help determine what our hand and how we're going to play as far as we move down the road. So with that, Humberto Thomas with Canyon Regional is here with us today. I'm gonna let him, Humberto, you can kind of start at what point you want. I mean, they've been conditioned a little bit to, you know, some of this information. But if you want to clarify and maybe go back one step and make them, you know, help them understand about the relationship between the Bear Met Saws and what's precipitating some of this.
Okay. Thank you, Council. I represent Canyon Regional Water Authority. I'm the Water Resources Director. And basically to that, I worked at Bear Met when I was Canyon Regional. Back a couple of years, about two years ago, Bear Met Water District was part of Canyon Regional. As a result of a vote by the voters, the holders of the company, they voted to go with San Antonio Water System. So all of Bear Met's assets with Canyon Regional went to San Antonio Water System. Part of that transaction was in some of the projects that we have. One of them was Lake Dunlap, which allowed Saws to get four thousand acre feet from Lake Dunlap. Another one was Wells Ranch, which is groundwater, which is coming from Carrizo Altar, which is in Dallas and one of the counties, of which stated they wanted about ten thousand acre feet of water from Canyon Regional. There was two phases to Wells Ranch. The first phase produced five thousand two hundred acre feet for all of Canyon Regional, of which Saws had twenty-eight hundred acre feet of that. This is about fifty-something percent of Wells Ranch. Wells Ranch Phase Two allowed them to grow into that ten thousand acre feet of water. As a result, as a water person, what we do is we go out and we start producing, acquiring leases. We start leasing land. We start producing permits. We go to the groundwater district, get a permit to hold that water for our needs. We know what our needs are. We know our needs at that time for ten thousand acre feet of water for a specific entity and other entities involved. So we go seek these permits. We seek the permits and go to the groundwater district. And as a result, as recently as a couple of months back, keep in mind, Saws was part of Canyon Regional. Saws felt, because of Bear Met, Saws felt that they no longer wanted to be part of Canyon Regional. They wanted to be a wholesale customer. So they no longer had board representation on Canyon Regional, which you all have board representation. Each entity has two board members that sit at Canyon Regional. They decided to pull out Canyon Regional. As soon as Saws joined the table, we asked them, were they still interested in the Wells Ranch Phase Two water? They said, we'll let you know. We'll let you know. So three years go by, which time Saws does this big project which y'all read about, which is called Vista Ridge, which is pulling fifty thousand acre feet of water from Broderson County. At that time, Saws came back and said, we have an answer for you. We no longer want that additional Wells Ranch water. Which in summation is about fourteen hundred acre feet of water available for other entities of Canyon Regional. Knowing that, we went to each entity within Canyon Regional, we asked them, would you be interested in this water? As you can imagine, this water, the going rate, we passed out some documents, we spoke to the administrator. The going rate just to produce this water is seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars per acre foot, which is very inexpensive. Reason being that the majority of infrastructure is already paid for through Phase One. Now, if you ask, well, what's the going rate for water? Based on what Saws is doing, Saws is producing, looking forward to doing a project in Broderson County, going rate is about twenty-two hundred dollars an acre foot. So it went from seven hundred to twenty-two. There's a big difference. It could fall anywhere in between them. As a result, we went to our board and our entities and asked them, would you be interested? Quickly, a lot of our entities decided to take up some of this water. We approached Laverne, which is one of our entities as well, and said, Laverne, are you interested in taking some of this water? We are aware there's basically two contracts, one of which, one has an amendment that kind of operate for Laverne. We do know that City of Laverne gets its water from East Central Water Supply, which City of Laverne pays a line use fee through East Central. I'm sorry, East Central. We do know that there's an agreement that goes for thirty years with Canyon Regional. We do have an agreement with Springs Hill that will expire, as Mayor indicated, in December of two thousand and fifteen. And at this point, that agreement with Springs Hill has allowed the City of Laverne to be basically subsidized, if you will, meaning you're basically paying a low cost to Springs Hill through Canyon Regional for water that really was subsidized. You're only paying the full cost of water, if you will. And so what we said, the best thing to do is approach Laverne and see if Laverne would be interested in this water. Because again, this water is permitted. It's a firm supply, meaning a firm supply, meaning during the drought of record, there are no restrictions. It's going to be produced at a cheap rate, seven seventy-nine. The actual project itself, when you look at what's in the Regional Plan, it says it's about twelve hundred dollars an acre foot. But because the majority of the infrastructure is already put out there, the price has dropped. So as a result, we went to different entities and we've asked, we went to Laverne and we've asked them. As a result of last month's board meeting, we had another entity join Canyon Regional. That entity is the City of Converse. City of Converse is looking for another water supply. They are looking for opportunity to grow and go out there and grab the cheapest water out there, of which at this time, it's Canyon Regional. And it only makes sense because our pipeline passes right through the City of Converse, in which they would just tap in and take the water. So we're in discussions with City of Converse with regards to how much water did they want? How much water did they need? And a long-term water supply. So jumping back to the City of Laverne, the discussions we've had, I believe you all have a well project that y'all are doing, which we praise you for doing and diversifying your water supply. The only thing I could say is, the water we have now is the cheapest water out there. And as time goes on, that water will get expensive. Again, the going rate is twenty-two hundred dollars an acre foot. And going back to some of the agreements and discussions we've had with the bond is that after December two thousand and fifteen, when this contract terminates with Springs Hill, we have a contract with Laverne that pretty much stipulates we can set the rate. And what that states is that, our understanding is, after two thousand and fifteen, it's going to be hard for us to go and market, go to the market, if you will, there's a market out there for water. Go out there and try to acquire water for the City of Laverne. Meaning, if we were to say what the rate would be at this point, it's anywhere from twelve hundred to two thousand dollars an acre foot. So you go, that's pretty expensive. Well, that is expensive. What we're saying is, here's an opportunity for the City of Laverne to buy into a project that's been established that allows you to get the cheaper water. Now, we'll still honor that agreement after two thousand and fifteen. We'll honor the existing agreement, which is for four hundred acre feet of water. Now, what that says is that, again, we get to set the rate. We went around and we asked our member entities, you know, what, would you be able to have water available for spot? Spot water, the term is spot water, meaning you come to us after two thousand and fifteen and at some point in time, if your wells don't produce, or if your wells produce, or if you're growing and you need more water, you come to us and you will honor the agreement. We're able to set the rate. We set the rate every October. So for instance, if we continue with our water agreement for these thirty years, and October of two thousand and fifteen, we can literally come to you and say, the new rate is this. Because we are able to do that, based on the contract. We know that water is going back to Springs Hill. Why is it going back to Springs Hill, which is the water y'all have been using? Because they've asked for it back. They need their water for development. So as a result, the new water rate can be anywhere from twelve hundred dollars to two thousand dollars an acre foot. We understand with the conversations with the City of Laverne, you will not need that water from us. You want to use this as a, I guess, backup. I don't want to say safety, but as a backup, which is fine. Just be understand, understand that at that time, whatever that rate is, is whatever you're going to pay. Because again, we would have to go to the market to acquire that water. And you say, well, isn't there a lot of water available? It depends. It depends on when you go to an entity who may have some water and may say, okay, I'm allowing you to lease this water from you, but in return, I want you to replace that cost for my water with what it's going to cost me to go develop water somewhere else. And they would probably say, because there's this new term out, there's called replacement cost for water. I want twelve hundred dollars an acre foot for this water. So in essence, you would pay twelve hundred dollars to two thousand dollars an acre foot. So in a nutshell, that's basically what we're talking about. What we're looking at doing at Canyon Regional is we're looking at seeking swift funds through the state of Texas. What is swift funds? Back in November, the state, through its rainy day fund, passed two billion dollars that could be used for water projects, which is called swift funding. Canyon Regional, based on Regional Plan, which is the region for this area, based on its projects, was ranked one, two in this list of three hundred water management strategies for the region. The first project listed by Canyon Regional was Wells Ranch Phase One, which is already done. Number two was Wells Ranch Phase Two, which is what we're talking about, that extra water that's available. We've been to the Water Development Board on three occasions. Last week, we met with the board chairman, Carlos Rubenstein. We submitted our application. He was very pleased that we submitted our application. We talked about the ability of us seeking funds, low-interest funds through the state for us completing Wells Ranch Phase Two. We're seeking fifty-five million dollars to complete Wells Ranch Phase Two. Our understanding is that if we seek these funds, a payment won't start until two thousand and seventeen to start paying back the state with the watered these funds. Now, the process is, we submitted a bridge application. Once the board, the deadline is February third. Once the Water Development Board looks at that application and designates it as moving on to the next step, they'll notify those entities within thirty days to submit a full application, which we're prepared to do at that time. Come November, December two thousand and fifteen, the state will come out with an awardment of a loan to allow you to borrow money on the state's behalf. We're very optimistic that Canyon Regional will receive that money, only because again, we're second in our region. Half of the projects are already done. Our demand centers are large and we're regional project. We're talking about entities all the way from Bear County, all the way to Seguin, and all the way back to Roffles. So we touch a large area. And with that being said, our hope is that we do get funding, we move with our next project, we build Wells Ranch Phase Two. One of the stipulations that the grant portion of the loan asks for is that there be water supply agreements. At this time, there are no water supply agreements with any of our entities for Wells Ranch Phase Two. We're looking at solidifying those agreements within this next, within this first quarter of two thousand and fifteen. What does that mean? We have prepared documents that we're going to go to those entities who've expressed interest on this additional water through Wells Ranch Phase Two and that water that was left by Saws on the table. So once that is done, we'll compile those and submit them to the state. Our hope is that we'll get all this done by April or May of two thousand and fifteen so we can submit all our documents to the state of Texas. So I don't want to say we're in a fast timeline, but we are in a timeline. I don't want to say this is something that we're springing on anybody, because everyone within Canyon Regional knew that this was about to happen. We had to get water supply agreements. Everybody knew that at some point, we had to do the project. The project is, hopefully, will come online by twenty, I guess we get funding twenty fifteen, we start building twenty sixteen. Twenty seventeen, the project comes online. So you ask, well, you know, is there any opportunity for us to be part of Wells Ranch if we wish to right now? Right now, there is. Within a couple, you know, we have a board of managers meeting next week in which we'll start distributing those contracts to those entities who want the water. It may be at some point that there won't be any water. At this time, I'm saying there is, because we still have some leeway, and if you may not be interested, that's fine. On full disclosure, we want our entities to know that. And we've been to all our cities, making a couple of rounds, making sure that they don't want the water. Because again, we've got to have someone pay for this, because if not, Canyon Regional pays for it, or if not, we dump the water. At this time, with discussions we had with the mayor, all the water is spoken for. There is no two hundred acre feet of water still available. What does that mean for the City of Laverne? Can you still come in? You can still come in and we can still talk to our members and they'll allow some of that two hundred to be left. But at this time, it's, you know, based on the discussions we've had, based on your proceeding with your Wells project, you know, again, we understand that. This water is spoken for. That's not to say that we cannot somehow ask our members to release two hundred acre feet of that for Laverne. So that's still on the table. But that is quickly approaching, because once these members take the contracts to the council, and it was last week, one of our members just approved five hundred acre feet of water for their city. So this water is going quickly. They understand and they realize this water isn't expensive compared to what's out there, compared to the next step. So yes, we still do have an agreement with Canyon Regional after two thousand and fifteen. We have this agreement for four hundred acre feet of water, of which Canyon Regional can set the rate. Keep in mind, by setting the rate, you're asking us to go out there and find water on the market. Or you're asking someone else to allow them, allow you to use their water. In essence, you would have to pay the replacement cost for that water. Replacement costs are not seven hundred dollars an acre foot. Replacement costs are anywhere from twelve hundred to two thousand dollars an acre foot. So with that being said, hopefully, I summed it up to the best of my knowledge, Mayor. And if you have any questions, I'll take those at this time. But keep in mind, we still have an agreement. We're going to honor that agreement, but here's an opportunity for you to come in at a lower end, secure water, be part of a project as opposed to just leasing water. You're part of a project that's already been established. There's secure water for the future of Laverne at a firm yield.
Okay. Thanks, Humberto. Kind of going along with the conversation that was, we had last Monday night. I expressed to David Wood and Humberto that with our well coming online, and I will say it will come online in February, our loaded, what we bought from Canyon Regional this past year was two hundred and fifty-one acre feet, surface acre feet. That's what we bought. When we met in December, we threw around a number of basically two hundred acre feet. One question that we asked these gentlemen, Monday, was, is the T C requirement backup, which was Dave said, point six?
Point six, please.
So, so I'm assuming, and I'm assuming, and it's a dangerous word. I'm assuming that if we took two fifty-one is what we use, that we can figure point six of that, in essence?
Yes, and just to give a little background, I don't know how familiar you are with this, and this was shared to me by David. The reason we have this four hundred acre feet agreement with you, City of Laverne, was because of that point six rule. This agreement was to help Laverne get over the point six rule.
Okay.
Okay, so that's where it's at. But if you're growing, and you haven't grown in this end, you're going to reach the point six rule pretty quick. Meaning, you're not going to have enough buffer to allow you to do that. So I don't know what your customer base is. I don't know what this, how close you are with this point six rule. You know, I've asked you, I don't know how you're growing, I don't know how fast you're growing. That this point six rule is going to put you in a violation with T C Q. The reason we did this initially was because Laverne was in violation of that. And we went and we did a contract with Laverne. We willed that water through East Central, and the water comes to East Central, and Laverne plays, pays a line fee at East Central and pays Canyon Regional for the admin cost. And that costs, based on the budget, the costs have been, and I hate to say, but they've been subsidized, meaning we went to Springs Hill, and Springs Hill had some extra water, and Springs Hill says, I just want to break even. I don't really care at this point. We did that. Springs Hill realizes the true cost of water, and Springs Hill needs that water. So that water that's been subsidized in Laverne is going to be no longer on the table. We're going to have to go back and try to find some makeup water for that. So, but that point six rule was in effect back then. We've helped you. Again, I don't know where you're at with this situation with the point six rule.
Well, I mean, we really roughly, Jason, have six hundred meters basically in that.
Yeah, it goes up and down each month.
And we talked about buildout when we looked at things that really the most, more water that we would be, would be, even if we were fully built out, what we were estimating, what, three hundred and fifty acre feet?
Yeah, because...
Who are fully built out as within the whole territorial batteries of Laverne.
We don't, that's too bad. I wish we had the C C N map way down. The whole situation is, is if, let's just, I mean, Humberto, I want to hang you here. I want to make sure that everybody hears you, gets the message from you, and then asks you any questions they've got at this point, because I don't want you to have to sit here all that long, as we may deliberate for a little while. But one of the things that was, as you started talking about, and let's just kind of go down the road, if we were to the ANAs, if we went south, we went west, we pretty much went anywhere outside of our city limits, we stepped right outside of our C C N and we stepped into other people's C C Ns. So the conversation, getting going back to Monday night, was, is, well, let's think about this now. Really, the reality is, is we have to plan for, take your geographical city limits as it sits today. Plan around that, because if we go outside of it, we're in somebody else's C C N anyway. So we're not going to be providing that water. So you can't factor that in. Even if you went past almost, we looked at, almost, there you go. If you don't like to move down the table down there, we can kind of look around it. I'm all for that. But even if you just factor, let's say, the three hundred and six acres at Perdola's, there's a large swath of that that is in SS's.
Where is it?
Yeah, C C N, which basically Perdola comes in, and here does this number, and it goes out here. So that whole section's all in, and there are C C Ns. So when you start looking at your planning, I mean, and this is approximate. I mean, this runs out this direction, but that's all Wiseman. I mean, that would be, it's all floodland and, so that's something that really kind of keep in the back of your mind.
Can you speak to buying back water? If we chose to go with the contract and said that, and really this is our, say, insurance policy, and we're not using that, but we're paying for it, what's the likelihood of selling it back?
At this time, the contract, okay, we're not dealing with the contract that expires in two thousand and fifteen. We're dealing with this new contract, with the current contract, in which you would, it's not a take or pay.
The current contract is not, but if we got into Wells Ranch Two?
There, I don't want to alarm you or say something that's incorrect, but within our contract with the Wells Ranch Phase Two, there is that provision that allows entities to sell water, release water amongst themselves, and allow the general manager to make a designation to allow that occur. And we've been doing that. And one of the things we've done at Canyon Regional is share water amongst ourselves. So it's not uncommon for one entity, crystal clear, to lease water to Sybilla, because they do that. You know, Saws is leasing water to Sybilla, Springs Hill is leasing water to Canyon Regional, so that still exists. It all depends on where everyone is at that time when the water is produced. There may be some need in which you may need it. There may be some need when you may not need it. One thing I got to make you aware of is that it's hard to sell water on a short-term basis or lease water. You can't lease water for one or two years. You've got to do it for five years minimum, because that allows the other entity to do its rate increases and adjust to get the used supply of water. So there is that ability to lease water back to other entities. Now, can you lease it back to Canyon Regional? Canyon Regional has no means of paying for that. We get our monies through the member entities. We will help you by allowing you to find and make dialogue with other members, and we also, you know, can go out and find what's out of the market, if you're willing to take it. But keep in mind, anybody outside the market would have to have some access to this water through our pipeline. So there has to be some proximal to this pipeline. Now, going back to the point six rule, this point six rule is only valid if you have a water supply agreement with us. So my understanding, this four hundred acre feet agreement that we have, may help the situation, may not. I'm not sure, because the last time we spoke with the City of T C Q was about a year ago. Sybilla asked us, if we need this to a spot lease, like we have currently in Laverne. Didn't mention Laverne, but it said something like a spot lease. Will T C Q allow us to do that? I called the city, I called T C Q, and T C Q said, no, you have to be able to produce that water then and there. And you have to have that water lined up. We can't go and try to find the water for you, because it's too late. You have to have that water lined up for you. It has to be able to be produced for you. We can't have another project way out in the future in which we're saying, we'll get water. It doesn't work that way. Water has to be in the line, be able to produce within the infrastructure, because what T C Q wants to do is go to City of Laverne, turn it on, see what the flow rates is. And if they were to produce that, well, then you're fine. If not, well, then there's issues there. So...
But let me ask, let me chime in real quick. But if we're sitting there, we have a valid contract with two thousand and thirty with Canyon Regional, for wherever the number may be, for the cost of water, does that in effect?
I do not know. And that's what I'm saying. I do, because we mentioned spot leases, and this is what this is. This is the spot lease. And I believe this was done, this agreement with Laverne was done a couple of years back. We met with T C Q last year regarding Sybilla and their notion of doing a spot lease, which is what Laverne has. I don't want to cause trouble from Laverne. I mean, you've got to find it out yourself whether that's valid or not. I don't want to call T C Q and say this is valid, because we have an agreement with Laverne. You need to do that on your own. I do know, we made calls to Sybilla and we talked about the same thing, and they told us, and Sybilla was there. You have to produce the water then and there. So here comes your problem. You're asking us to go and secure water, but when you're ready to pay for it, you're ready to pay for it. You may not need it. We have to pay for it somehow. So, you know, this agreement's not valid for what they need, for T C Q. We have no way of paying, we have no way of securing the water. T C Q calls and say, well, is there water? Well, we got to go get it. We got to charge them, and it's not a take or pay, so they have to pay us. They're going to pay us when we get the water. If we don't have the water, you can't use it for the point six rule. I do not know.
So I guess I'm confused.
I am too now.
Because we have an agreement that says we can get up to four hundred acre feet of water through December of two thousand and thirty.
At whatever price now.
At whatever price it's going to cost us. So my assumption when I read that is, we call you and we need water, and that line's automatically turned back on again.
Yes, assuming we can get the water. We'll get, we're going to get the water, you don't have to pay for it.
Okay, let me ask you.
What I'm saying is, because of everything that's, the recent discussions we've had with T C Q regarding the spot water issue, you need to ask that yourself to T C Q. We have an agreement with Canyon Regional that allows for lease parameters. Will that still be valid for a point six rule? Let them tell you that. I can't tell you, all I'm saying is caution.
And we'll work that out. I just want to make sure that when I turn the faucet on to Canyon Regional, because the contract says we can do that, that water's going to flow as soon as we make that call.
Water will be there at some rate, correct.
My question is cost. You lost me back when we're...
They don't know what the cost is going to be at.
It would be determined every year.
It's, it can be determined every year, but we know...
And that's what we're committed to, the four hundred acre feet that we are committed to currently. That cost can vary or will vary depending...
It's going to vary come October two thousand and fifteen. It's gonna vary come October twenty fifteen. It's gonna vary, cause at that point we change the rate. We know after December twenty fifteen, the water y'all been using was from Springs Hill. That water was subsidized. That water is off the table. Those rates are no longer valid. The going rate, if we were to go out in market and try to secure water, try to do more leases, is anywhere from twelve hundred to two thousand dollars an acre foot, which you would pay. You know, um...
Where did this seven hundred?
The seven hundred is the current rate, if you were to buy in to Wells Ranch phase two.
And that's guaranteed for how long?
That's guaranteed for the life of the project, cause the project is being built. Being built at seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars an acre foot. That, and there's a spreadsheet which we distribute, that has your raw water payment, your bond payment, your raw water cost, your line use fee, your, your admin fee. So that is a set rate. That's a set cost for the price of water. The other one is a variable cost. I mean, it's gonna vary whenever you call us for water. You know, if we have no water, if we can't find any water, then we're at a predicament. Canyon Regional's at a predicament. Which in essence, meaning we can't produce the water because there is no water to be had. We can't force members to give back the water if they don't wish to, if they're using it for their point six rule or whatever. So, we're in a predicament. You know, yes, we do have a contract. Uh, it's there, you know, can we uphold it? I do not know. I do not know, only because I can't tell you what's gonna happen in the future when everyone starts growing and everyone needs their water. And it's gonna be very difficult for us to go on the market and start buying water for a year, cause the Burnia needs it. Because, you know, they're gonna need it, cause they, they need it. And we have a contract. It's gonna be very difficult for us to do that. You know, again, this, the purpose of this contract was to allow the Burnia to get over that point six rule, to allow the Burnia to develop its water projects, which we're asking you and we're praising you that you do that. You know, I do not know if, uh, what's gonna happen in the future with other entities that may need this water that today may be floating, next couple of years may not be there. And that's the honest truth there, I don't.
Well, okay. It, again, some of now, this information's a little different from what we heard last Monday.
I always assumed we had a fallback plan and that four hundred acre feet, at whatever cost that was going to be.
You do have, you do, you do have that. I'm not...
But you're telling me a mayor, you may or may not be able to find the water, so you may or may not be able to uphold the agreement.
Well, then we may not be able to uphold the agreement. That's true.
So then the water may not turn on.
And it may not turn on. That's what I'm saying. Go, you gotta ask TCQ, does this agreement solidify what the requirement is for, for the point six rule? I don't wanna leave you stranded, say, yeah, we have an agreement, walk away. I do not know. You've gotta get those answers for yourself. If it, if it solidifies, within trying, and the burden falls back on Canyon Regional to try to find the water that you need for that year.
Okay, I understand.
And the problem may be that we may not be able to find it. I'm telling you that, because in order for us to find it, we have to build stuff to put it into transmission or ask for members to cut back to allow you to do that. In the future, I do not know if that's possible.
But I guess it depends on how, how serious you take this contract, because it says you will provide it. You know, where you get it, we don't have control of it.
But again, the understanding of this contract was to allow, the Burnia to get over that point six rule, was to allow the Burnia to develop its water projects, not rely on this. You know, if, if, if you're asking me, can we uphold this, uphold this contract? You're forcing us to, and we will. But if we get to a point that we can't, then we can't. And there's nothing I can do about that. And this was done before I was in, before I came to Canyon Regional.
Or pretty much anybody sitting up here.
Sure. So, so, uh, you know, the, the best thing that, that can happen is that they allow you to use this contract. We, whenever you call on water, we charge you whatever rate it is, you pay it, we find you the water.
But we would continue to just pay for what we used?
Continue to pay for what you, what you use, but you would still be paying for a line use fee and an admin fee.
But we've paid those for years when we never took it wrong.
Exactly. Now, the question is, you have a line use fee and an admin fee. You know, I do know, and we had the discussion on Friday, how you, Monday, how you'd rather use some of your monies to help you with your project. I mean, you're paying for stuff you're never gonna use. Does it make sense to not pay for that and invest all in your Wells project? I do not know, your, your current Wells project. I do not know.
But whether we use the water or not, we're looking at almost, oh, two hundred thousand dollars. So can, can the city afford two hundred thousand dollars if our well is producing? Is that a good use of funds?
Those are questions you've got to ask yourself.
That's a high-dollar insurance policy.
If we took two, if we gave two hundred, if we just took two hundred gallon, or two hundred acre feet, we'd save fifty-five thousand dollars. But we're only getting half as much water. But at the other rate, it would cost us ninety-nine thousand dollars more to get four hundred acre feet. So I guess, I, I think what I'm, uh, and I think what you're telling us is that if we became, uh, I don't know if stakeholders would be the right word, that if we bought into Wells Ranch now, we could have water for the guaranteed rate?
Yes.
From phase two forever?
It's gonna be that rate, so, cause it's already been built and those are the rates that we provided that are in there. The, the, the seven seventy-nine. Those are the rates that we, we, when we went back and we were trying to figure out, we would pay what? We started doing it for every entity. We had scenarios. The Burnia said two hundred acre feet, another entity said a thousand acre feet, another one said four hundred, so we figured out what those costs would be. So that way they can take that number and start preparing the council to see this, how much it's gonna cost for sixty part of this project. So yes, you know, there's, it's a business decision. I can't tell you, uh, with a straight face, come to us and we'll have the water based on this thirty-year contract within twenty years. I do not know. You know, we may, we may not.
But if we're a new contract, we would.
Under the new, buying into Wells Ranch phase two, you would have two hundred acre feet, you wouldn't have four hundred, you'd have two hundred.
So logic tells me, get into the new contract where there's a guaranteed rate and break the other contract.
That's, that's a business decision.
Well, that's, uh, that's kinda the...
But then have... Simple-minded, I realize, but...
But that's, and it, that's it in a nutshell.
If we bought four hundred acre feet from phase two, I mean, if we signed up for that, we would pay for that whether we used it or not?
Uh, yes, the new contract, the new Wells Ranch phase, the new Wells Ranch contracts. Again, you'd be using another contract that was just to help La Vernia with this point six rule. Keep in mind, there was no take or pay in that. It wasn't four hundred acre feet take or pay, it was whenever you needed to get you over this point six. The Wells Ranch phase two contracts are all taken, take or pay. Because as, as a hundred percent of the water and production is out there, brings down the cost for everybody. So it's a take or pay contract. You would pay whether you took it or not. The four hundred was to help La Vernia move up to the next level to need this point six rule, to go develop its water projects or develop a project with Canyon Regional. Now, these questions you're asking, these are business decisions. I can only tell you, check with TCQ. If this contract's valid and makes business sense with you, then do it, continue with it. I'm telling you now, I may have a hard time in the future, and that's gonna be my problem. You say, well, it's just your problem, Canyon Regional. But you're part of me. I'm part of you. We end up in disagreement.
And we can't break this contract, you know?
We're, we're, we're legal, legal fight. And some of you who've been there for a while understand, there are legal, there are some disagreements that happen within our, when I work, and we tend to resolve them. We find ways to resolve, and one of them was, uh, uh, the Springs Hill issue, where we tried to use Springs Hill to, to move water through it. And, and we couldn't do that, so we went out and sought, sought bonds to build a pipeline. So we'll figure it out, but, you know, if, if this is your saving grace, that's your business decision. If you're gonna be able to save money by getting out of this contract and investing in Wells Ranch, that's a business decision. If you're banking on just using this contract and falling out into the radar without talking to TCQ, that's a business decision. I'm just letting you know the discussions I've had with them. And if this is valid and makes biz, good business sense for you to keep your contract, well, then by all means, keep it. But I'm telling you, I don't know if I can uphold that contract in the future, cause water's becoming more expensive and very difficult to acquire.
But how much would be available for phase two? For us, if we wanted to get some, how much could we get?
Here's, here's the deal. Um, I sound like these cards. We've talked about two hundred acre feet of water, okay? We've approached other entities that initially told us they wanted, for one, one instance, one instance, one entity wanted a thousand acre feet. They went to the city council and the city council said, just give us five. So, we have, uh, some water available. You know, uh, at, at that point, we have about seven hundred acre feet of water that possibly can go somewhere else. And I'm not gonna say that somewhere else, cause I know the, the price is here and I don't want to, to, to do that, but can go somewhere else. But we understand that you are part of Canyon Regional and we wanna afford you the opportunity. That's why we've been coming out and telling you, here's what we have. And we've gone to every entity, we've talked two or three times. Here's what we have, you know, make a business decision. Cause this decision's gonna leave us and you won't have the opportunity. You will not be there. You tell me how much water you want, I can go back, talk to general manager and say, city of La Vernia may want this much. Give you some scenario, how much it's gonna cost. Let you take some action and go that, go that route. Um, but, you know, at this point, the only numbers we've seen is two hundred. And at the last discussion on Monday, we heard, you know, we really didn't wanna do that, so I don't know what, you know, our thoughts are. Do you need to communicate to us and let us know, we may be interested in some amount? I can go back and bring you something and say, this is what it's gonna cost. And once I bring it and say, this is what it's gonna cost, we're sure that we can get you that water. Cause we do know we have available seven hundred acre feet right now of, of Wells Ranch. In addition, we developed another project, but we know we have seven hundred acre feet of, of Wells Ranch water. And that's why we approached all our member entities, cause we knew this water is expensive. This is the low-hanging fruit. Everything else is gonna be expensive. We do have another project in our, in our books, which is the brackish water. And if you looked at that, it's eighteen, eighteen hundred dollars an acre foot to develop that. So, you know, uh, it's all a business decision. You let us know. We'll go back, crank out some numbers, let you see it. If you're not interested, let us know. If you are, let us know, because we have to start solidifying contracts with those entities who want, who wanna start paying for this water. Now, you say, well, we're not, we're not getting anything, we have to start paying for it. You have, each entity that signed up for this water left over by Sausa has to start paying for it, because Sausa stopped paying for it. Sausa, Sausa stopped in December. January, which is a couple of weeks, two weeks, three weeks ago, we're having to pay that for our leases. We have to pay to reserve the water through our leases, which is called the raw water, uh, raw, raw water agreement, uh, I'm sorry, raw water cost, which is a hundred and twenty-two dollars an acre foot. So if you say you want two hundred dollar, two hundred acre feet, you pay two hundred times one twenty-two from January until we produce the water. So, the Burnia would reserve that water, if you will. You're reserving that water to be produced twenty seventeen. So every year, you'd be paying one twenty-two per acre foot for that year until we produce it. Once it's produced and you have the bond payments and you have everything else, it fits into that seven hundred dollars an acre foot cost. So, and you do have some entities ready to start paying out the one twenty-two. So, you know, we need some dialogue or some, I don't see some dialogue, we already had that.
Twenty-four-four.
We need some type of, uh, direction.
Okay, thank you.
From your council saying, yes, you wanna move forward, or no, you wanna move, don't wanna move forward. You know, either way, it's a business decision. Do your homework, make sure the agreement works. If it makes business sense, don't do it. If it does, do it. You know, I'm just trying to give you all the facts of what we know and what we can see out there.
Okay. Mr. Tom Calloway's in the audience. Tom?
Uh, I just wanted to ask you one question, sir. Uh, on the, you're talking about seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, the fixed rate for the water cost. Okay, what is the cost of your, your line use and admin fee?
The line use, I believe...
And will that be able, will that stay at the same fixed rate or will that go up?
No, that's gonna stay at the same. I think that the cost I gave you with line use fee was seventeen, uh, thousand dollars, uh...
Yes, it's not in this one.
It's not in there. The admin fee and everything I provided, uh, on with the cost breakout.
Line is seventeen, one sixty.
Yes.
And admin, three thousand, eight oh six, point four two.
That comes up to like one seventy-nine and right.
I'm sorry, what was it, three thousand what?
Three thousand, eight oh six, point four two.
So that would mean that that's added on to the seven eighty-nine?
No, that's the cost of the seven seventy-nine.
Oh, it's in there?
It's in there.
It's on, it's already...
Yes, I provided you those numbers and they're all in there, just to make sure they're captured. But I think, at one point I gave an email that it wasn't in there and so we forgot the line use fee. Add that on there, that's what that is.
Cause I, I've got some information we had from the past meeting where it showed that the head for the admin fee in the line use was like two hundred and twenty-eight dollars an acre foot. That's what you have been paying in twenty twelve, because this information's based on one foot.
I do not know on your... I'd be glad to take that back and I do not know what to consider.
Well, the rough number has been about thirty-six thousand line, line and admin, if I recall.
Yeah, thirty-seven is what I got.
Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark. I mean, it, it fluctuates because we get an update, uh, yearly on that.
Yeah, this, this, uh, this example I had was figuring a hundred and sixty-six acre feet, cause that was the use of water, your, your use out here of Canyon Regional water. So, it worked out to two hundred and eighty on a hundred and sixty-six acre, or acre feet.
Yeah, like, like you heard, I mean, we pulled, pulled our records this year. We, we actually purchased two hundred and fifty-one, we produced about five and a half.
So you bought a lot more?
Yeah, yeah, a lot more. So, you know, it, it kinda, uh...
Do the admin fees and line use, does that stay fixed? Does that stay fixed?
The line use stays fixed based on, on what I gave you, um, the, the, the rate that we're looking at here, you know, yeah, it's gonna stay fixed, cause I gave you the bond payments for so many years, right? It broke out everything.
Yes, you did.
Mm-hmm. For so many years, so those, those cost, pretty much fixed costs. So... The numbers you quoted, I, I can't say this, you know, cause I don't really know too well, but you have...
They're based on that.
You know, it could've been, I'm not gonna, I don't know.
Okay. I mean, while Mr., I mean, I wanna hang you up all night. So, is there any other questions? For, for Bertha?
You're saying seven seventy-nine acre foot includes all of the administrative, line use and all that kind of terms?
That's the cost we provided.
Short of maybe East Central's charge, right?
No, I believe that, that...
It didn't include bonds and everything?
Not include bonds, right? We, again, it's a snapshot of what this, what this cost now. Keep in mind with this, you have a firm supply, you're part of the project now, you're no longer just leasing water. You're, you're a customer, you wanna say customer, but you're actually part of Canyon Regional. Not that you weren't, but you actually died to a project, producing two hundred acre feet of water.
It's seven seventy-nine, thirty-four.
Okay, that makes sense based on what I see here.
Okay. Okay, uh, any other questions?
The only thing I ask is that...
Thank you.
Is that you make a decision and just let us know, you know, there's no hard feelings, there's, there's, it's just, we would like to help you because you are part of Canyon Regional. If not, that's fine, you know. Go forward to the project, you know, do what you're gonna do. And let us know, and we'll honor, again, the thirty-year contract. And I mean, again, I don't know if we're able to do that. Twenty, thirty years from now, it's, water's gonna be very difficult. You need to pay a premium when you could've bought into a project, or it's gonna give you two hundred acre feet for certain.
Yeah, and, and Bertha, honestly, that's, that's the hard question that's before this council is, the fact that I don't think that anybody here really fully expects this contract to be the saving grace for the city till two thousand thirty. But what it does do is it offers a little bit of leeway as we maneuver through. And you know what our timelines are at this point. Uh, so, I think the, the, the big immediate concern is, is that we did, we've always known two thousand, or, uh, December two thousand fifteen was gonna be looming. Uh, it was a precipitous for us to start the projects that we've already engaged in. Uh, I think the, the big concern is, is there was a somewhat of a conceived notion that it was kinda being, felt like we were being strong-armed into agreeing to something else. But we ultimately, and I understand your position, I understand Canyon Regional's position, and I appreciate the fact that you do allow us to be on the board and you do allow us to participate in all factions of, of what goes on with Canyon Regional. But the bottom line is, we're here, we're worried about, we, we have a firmer grasp of where we're going, obviously, and y'all do, and that's understandable, but, uh, that's a token, there, we, we do have options. We have a, a land lease option with, with an owner that could provide us, you know, uh, some, uh, longer range plans. It may or may not, uh, you know. We, we get hit with all sorts of propositions every week, just about, and so it just, you have to plan for that. And so, it, it just, we're in one of those, like I explained last Monday, we're in one of those little unique positions to where we're kinda caught, not yet ready just to pull the trigger on, you know, one and crank it up, but yet we think it's gonna get us down the road in pretty good ways, but we're not sure. And, uh...
And like I said, so, you know, uh, I'm glad y'all are doing that. I'm glad you're doing your project. Um, hopefully it comes to fruition. And my intent is not to say something, my intent is just to tell you what it's all about. And it's a business decision, I understand that. You know, we have business decisions and we all do. And you've got your constituents, your, your citizenry to, to worry about, I understand that. It's just, you know, this is what's presented to us at this time, you know, we make... You know, we make a decision, we move forward and, and again, there's no love lost. I don't, and I hate that, I don't want to perceive that, so I'm, we just wanted to make sure everybody understood where we're at. And when we bring somebody else in and they want that water, you, someone will not say, that was never offered to me. We may do diligence for everyone to go back and forth two or three times to hit them and just tell them, you know, hey, you're probably wrong with it. Here it is. Are you interested? Let us move forward. So, with that being said, I'll, I'll leave and thank you for the opportunity and hopefully I did justice and.
You did, you did. Absolutely.
Definitely clarified some things.
If you need anything, let us know. And if, if there's a decision you make, let us know, good or bad.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure I'll be in touch.
Right or wrong, or whatever the case may be.
No doubt. I'm sure I'll be in touch with you here. The internet's coming, guys. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, at this point, it is, uh, four fifty-two. Kind of move it, we move into recess for about five minutes. We'll go online and, uh, I'll, I need that to be real fast. Do you want to go with that?
Give me five minutes.